All right, good evening. The time being 7:00 PM on March 27th, 2023. All members of the planning board being present, call this meeting to order. Let some folks know, but judging by the crowd tonight, you know we are here for the auspicious occasion, which is Mr. Fowler's last meeting, his 40-year career on the planning board. We will discuss in greater detail a little bit later in the meeting. But for right now, I'll let anyone here in the audience who's here for Agenda Item G, which is One Main Street.
Auspicious.
That appointment is requested to be continued to our 4:10 meeting, so nothing will be discussed about that this evening. So you're safe to leave if that's why you were here. Otherwise, we will get going on the agenda. We do have some things to do tonight. So if you can keep, you know, say it in five words instead of 15 words, it'd be much appreciated if anybody who comes up tonight. So first item on the agenda, Agenda Item A, approval minutes for February 13th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 13th, 2023.
All right, motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Takes care of that. Agenda Item B, committee reports. Any of the members, any committee reports they wish to make this evening?
All set, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, we want to agenda item B two, which is Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep it brief this evening. One item I wanted to note is that the Housing Production Plan will be presented to the Board at the Monday, April 24th meeting, and the Select Board at the Tuesday, April 25th meeting for approval. And the most recent housing workshop was held on March 16th and was very successful. So we're going to take the findings from that workshop, wrap them into the Housing Production Plan, and put it up for a vote for both boards before we send it to DHCD. And the only other item I wanted to note is that at the next meeting on Monday, April 10th, we will be having the proposed zoning changes discussed that have been discussed in recent months, as well as a citizen's petition for their public hearing for the annual town meeting warrant.
All right, so with that, we'll move on to Agenda Item C, which is 2504 Main Street. This is continued from our March 13th meeting. Mayor, do you want that?
Uh, sure.
Just state your name for the record. The floor is yours.
For the record, I'm Yara Cousins with Civil Design Consultants. So I'm filling in for Jim Hanley. He couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. So at the last planning board meeting on March 13th, there were two outstanding items that we had to address. So I'll just go over those two items. Number one was to change the name of the applicant on the application form, which we did and believe submitted to Alex. So the applicant is Canaffords, Inc. Number two was related to the sidewalk. So we had requested a fee in lieu for installing the sidewalk. We received a letter from DPW on Friday stating that they require that the sidewalk be constructed. So the revised plans that you have right now shows the proposed sidewalk along the frontage, which will require a DOT permit. We also submitted revised exhibits, which highlight the existing and proposed impervious areas. The proposed improvements will result in a net reduction of 680 square feet of impervious surface. There was a new comment in DPW's letter regarding vehicle access to the last parallel parking spot. So an average-sized car can enter and exit that specific space even if the adjacent spaces are full. However, if you'd like us to remove that space, we have no issues with that. So just to recap, the bylaw required 12 spaces. On the plans, we show 18 spaces. If we remove that one spot, we'd be down to 17 spaces. With that, happy to take any questions.
All right, we'll stop Mr. Fowler.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Reviewing these things that we've just got now, so you'll have to bear with me just for a moment.
Sure. So the only change we've made was added the sidewalk.
Right. What is the pink plant?
That's the exhibit. It shows the existing impervious surface, which is pretty much the entire site.
I hadn't seen that before, so.
Okay, got it.
All right. I'm all set. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just want to be clear. So this is the space down here that they're talking about?
Exactly, correct.
Would it be fair to say that this space could also be removed? And that would mean the parallel space could stay if either of them?
Exactly.
And the only reason I bring that up, Mr. Chairman, is this space tucks into the turning in the driveline a little more so. I think maybe it'd be worth mentioning to DPW that that might be a better option, to take that space out, clear out more of that turn, and then leave the parallel space in. Basically, you know, apples and oranges maybe, but I think that might actually be a little bit better option because that is going to be kind of a tight turn getting around that corner. And if somebody happens to park an oversized vehicle on the parallel space behind the building, now you're making that turn a little sharper and you're staring at somebody's bumper. And, you know, heaven forbid that, you know, someone's not looking right at it or expecting it. So that's the only comment that jumped to mind. I remember bringing that particular corner of the property up in our first meeting, and I'm glad to see something's being done about it. I would definitely recommend that.
Okay.
Mr. Duffy.
I really have no comment on it. It just, are we looking at the parking space? I couldn't quite see what Mr. Chamberlain was looking at. Is it one behind the handicaps right there?
Right here.
It's the last parallel space.
Last one on the streets, sir?
Yeah.
I should be okay.
Yeah, I really don't have, I don't have a problem with that parking space. I don't know. I'm going to just look at that.
Mr. Vitale.
Just one question. I know you're doing the sidewalks, which is great. The fire truck was a comment by DPW, but I thought we had got that resolved at last meeting with Mr. Fowler's comments about the pumper truck going in first so the truck wouldn't be able to get around anyway. So we're good with that?
That's my understanding, that it was talked about at the last meeting, and the Board was all set with the fire access. Yeah.
Okay, with that, I'm all set.
Thanks.
All right, I don't have a preference on the display, the space thing, taking one out, although I do think Mr. Chamberlain's idea might make more sense. I think it accomplishes what the DPW was concerned about, but leaves just that little bit of room. The only thing I'd say is that we make it, that that is not to become a snow storage area. You know what I mean? The whole point is to have that extra space.
Sure.
That's what they want. And by removing that, they don't want it to turn into where they pile snow. But we write back to, that last space is a little bit of an issue in terms of how they park. So if we just make a note that that, you know, be written in, that it's not to be used as a snow storage area. But I guess I would recommend taking out the, I don't know, is that the, since the other one's parallel, we'll call that one the vertical space, you know, at the end.
The 90 degree, yeah, sure.
And, you know, unless DPW has an objection, that's the one I think we will suggest being removed. If they throw a fit for some reason and really want it to be the other one, I guess they can do that. That's fine. But that's what I think is the better choice, so. Otherwise, I'm all set, so.
Mr. Chairman. I concur with Mr. Chamberlain's observation.
Is everybody else all right with that, especially me and one? Mr. Duffy, you all right with that?
Okay, so just, so we're talking about possibly removing the last.
Just going to take this one out instead of commenting on.
Okay.
It accomplishes the same thing, but it might leave a little swing room.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll do that. All right, with that, I'll be up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Going once, twice. Bring it back to the Board. What is the pleasure of the Board at this time?
Making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
I have a motion made. Motion seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. We have, from Ms. Latta, we have our list with waivers first. So the request for a waiver is for Section 6.2.10.8. State that the application, that an application considered a site plan must submit a master signage plan. So they'll have to bring that in later. They just not bring it in now. So do we have a motion on that waiver? Motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now as to the rest of the conditions, you guys were all set with those, right? You've already seen them. All right, so I'm not going to read through them. These are the conditions. Everybody's seen them. Those are the ones that'll be added with the addition of the one notation on the no snow storage in the area where the parking space is being removed.
Correct, and if I could add that I recommend that the DPW have a chance to review the exhibits that were submitted today to ensure that they are compliant with the impervious surface calculations.
Okay, that's fine. So we'll add that.
What about this one? Waiver number one, 5.33.
It's not on the list for this evening, I don't think it's.
So that waiver was resolved as a matter of, that would be considered for a new construction site plan review, and we're kind of treating this more as a minor site plan review where we're not going to expect an existing site to be in dimensional compliance because that would just require them to pull up all the pavement and knock the whole building down.
Right, okay. All right, so we have our motion, and we have our conditions. So we have motion made. Do we have a motion made?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll let your client know. Good luck.
Thank you.
Do we approve that?
That's it?
Okay. You have to wait.
Yeah, no, we do both. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item D. This is 118.
No, so I don't think we made a motion to approve this.
We just did with the conditions.
With the waivers.
We did the waiver first, and then we just did the conditions.
There we go.
You got the vote, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, good. Congratulations, thank you.
All right, so moving on to Agenda Item D, which is 118 Lumber Lane, also continued from our 313 meeting.
So you weren't getting up, so I was like, maybe she didn't.
That's why.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I was like. Me? Me or Bob? Oh, Bob.
What are you working? This first meeting.
All right, once you folks are settled, give your names for the record. This floor is yours.
For the record, I'm Yara Cousins with Civil Design Consultants.
Take you go from Woodland Design.
Joe Phelan, 118 Lumber Lane.
So we're here for proposed industrial garage project. The project requires site plan special permit and a land disturbance permit. So we opened the meeting back on February 13th and continued the last two meetings in order to address DPW's comments. We did receive a letter from DPW on Friday, which I believe we addressed all their comments. So one of the main changes we made to the plans was adding a drainage easement on the abutting lot on 120 Lumber Lane. And this is in order to maintain the existing drainage flow path. The easement plan will be recorded prior to destruction. So with that, happy to take any questions.
All right, we'll stop Mr. Fowler again. It's going to be a theme tonight, Mr. Fowler.
You having fun? I'm looking for, what was the last plan that we received? When was, when did we get?
It was dated March 23rd.
I'm sorry?
March 23rd.
Okay. After reviewing the plans and Alex's comments, I'm satisfied that this could be addressed this evening and that all the facts that have been brought up have been addressed. So I'm all set.
All right, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as far as the comments from Town Engineer, we are complete, right?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'm all set. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Duffy.
And I see that you're just, you're coming in later for a sign special permit? You don't.
Well, we think, I think Mr. Duffy's a sign that we're going to put up as probably a compliant sign because this isn't like a, you know, big retail area. We'd have to have a spot, a sign. So our sign is probably going to be well under the dimensional requirements. So we think that we'll probably just have just a regular permit with the Building Department. And if that isn't the case, then we would come back to you with a sign special permit. But we don't anticipate having a sign that would require that type of approval.
Okay, very quick, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, so I'm just looking at the March 24th IDR review letter, and I see question three and question six. Question three, they're saying this comment remains. Does the 20-foot-wide drainage easement resolve the discharge over the riprap not overflowing into the adjacent properties?
So I had addressed that comment. So this is in regards to the infiltration basin that's parallel to industrial AV. So we've actually sized that basin to capture, store, infiltrate stormwater up to the 100-year storm event. So we don't anticipate any overflow going on to industrial AV. If it does happen, we will make sure to address that. But that was that comment, number three.
Okay, because this, this came from our DPW four days ago? Three, three days ago? So I was just curious why if the solution was already in their hands, they didn't remove the comment. I see Ms. Latta waiting to weigh in on that, so go ahead.
So I spoke with the Engineering Division at, when they were about to issue the letter, and the recording of the drainage easement will satisfy both of those comments. And actually, that was something I wanted to bring up. That's a condition that will also, I would like to also include that the applicant has to record the easement prior to the commencement of land disturbance activities, which it sounds like that's not going to be a problem. So that'll be added as a fourth condition to address that. And I confirmed with Randy from the Engineering Division that that will satisfy all comments.
Okay. With that knowledge, I have no further questions or comments.
Okay, I don't have anything extra. So you guys have seen the conditions? You're all set with the conditions? And the only waiver is that 6.2.10.8, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then we'll just add that number four, which is applicant will record easement prior to land disturbance, if we get to that point. All right, with that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Also seeing none. Bring it back to the Board. What is the pleasure of the Board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, to close the public hearing.
Motion made, do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do the land disturbance permit first. Do we have a motion on the land disturbance permit?
So moved.
A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Out to the waiver, which is Section 6.2.10.8. Do I have a motion on the waiver?
So moved.
Do we have a motion made, do I have a second?
Right, check.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. As to the site plan special permit itself, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 118 Lumber Lane Site Plan Review Special Permit as proposed.
With conditions. With conditions as listed, including that fourth one we added this evening. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item E, 2 Radcliffe Road.
No, first one.
Have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made and seconded. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Give it to the chair.
You guys want up? And then once you get settled, if you give your names.
Take it right over there.
For the record, the floor is yours.
No, they're playing tomorrow.
No, I commented on this.
She's going to check that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Should be a light that turns on.
On which side? Am I pointing at that thing? I only see a red light. All right. It's also my first night.
There it goes.
There we go.
There we go, all right.
You guys just need to give your names for the record.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Michael Shelter, Project Manager at EcoG Energy.
This is Julia Magliosa, Director of Operations at EcoG Energy.
And this is Kate Nada, Development Manager of EcoG Energy.
So good evening, and thank you to Chairman Johnson, Vice Chair Fowler, the Tewksbury Planning Board, Planner Louder, and all other Tewksbury staff present here tonight. We are here to discuss our site plan review and special permit application for proposed solar installation of a solar canopy and battery energy storage system to be located at 2 Radcliffe Road. We're very excited to be here tonight to present our proposed project to you, following conversations we have had with Planner Louder and other members of the Tewksbury Town staff earlier this month. So EcoG is the developer of this project and is the authorized representative of the 2 Radcliffe Road owner, Thirniteon Analyzers LLC. So here's just a quick little bit of background information about EcoG. We were founded in 2010, and we develop and finance distributed renewable energy generation projects. We own and operate systems across 12 states, Washington DC, and the Caribbean. And our current portfolio is 33 operational projects totaling to 12.8 megawatts and 34 projects that are currently under development totaling 25 megawatts. And the other information is just about more of our structure that was given to the owner when we were going through the proposal phase with them. So existing conditions, this is the plot. This is the property at 2 Radcliffe Road. As you can see, there's an existing building and a quite extensive amount of parking space there where we plan to install the solar canopies. Natural Resources, so just a quick overview of that. So EcoG contracted Technomic Engineering. We performed a natural resources survey at 2 Radcliffe Road and identified that there is an existing waterway under the property and an abutting waterway. But there is, the soil composition results came back as not hydroic. So we will develop a relevant plan as required to address any impacts on the existing waterway and abutting water body. And we will be submitting an application to the Conservation Committee, Commission at the right time. And we've already been in touch with them to make sure that we have everything squared away on both sides.
Looks like I lost connection.
There we go. So property lines, these are just a map and satellite view of the property. Neighboring properties, there were a handful of abutters that were identified, and we have them just here highlighted for all of you right now. So the site plan, so the solar canopies are going to total a little over 1,000 kilowatt DC, 933 kilowatt AC. And the battery energy storage system falls in the range of about 1,300 kilowatt hours. We did add in the setback information based on the Tewksbury zoning bylaws. And we do, our properties do, our proposed project does fall 51 feet or further back. And on the side and rear, we're at 48 feet. So the rear of the building is where the battery energy storage system will go. The circled area up on the right is where the battery will go. And then the other circle on the left with the four, five dots, five black dots in there are going to be proposed new utility poles that will be required for the project. This is an array, a view of the array layout, just a drawing that we had prepared for this. As you can see, they already have some cars driven under there so you can get a better sense of what something like this will look like. Tree removal, we do know that the town has a recommendation to preserve any trees of a caliber of six inches or more. However, for this project, in order to install the new utility poles, the utility provider will require us to remove those trees in the back, in the rear of the property. And in the front of the property, those four trees right there would be required to be removed in order to fit the canopies within the lot. These are just a couple of drone images of what the parking lot actually looks like at 2 Radcliffe Road, where we plan to install the solar canopies and the battery storage system. That is the rear of the building that you are looking at there and for the battery energy storage system. So the view of canopies 1 through 3 from Radcliffe Road, these are all of the dimensions that we had. The 13 foot 6 inch on the lower end, up to 19 feet on the highest end. And the 13 feet, 13 foot 6 inch is the minimum height we can have for emergency vehicles to get through the parking lot should anything happen that we need to have them in there. And the aisle way on these canopies will be 33 foot feet 1 inch. And that falls outside of the minimum that's allowed of the, from the Tewksbury Street Design and Parking Lot Report that I had found from June 2022, saying that for the parking lots for the interior driveway has to be a minimum of 20 feet for two-way traffic. So since this will be two-way traffic, we made sure that those aisle ways would stay wide enough. And these are from canopies 4 through 9. And when you're standing in the parking lot, as you can see also that this aisle way does fall just outside of the 20-feet minimum. We, when we spoke with the town staff, we were asked to prepare a maneuverability report, which we have a draft done as of last week. And I will be providing a PDF copy of this over to Planner Louder following this meeting. The, so the blue semicircles or curves are where they had drawn in for the maneuverability of the vehicles. We were also asked to discuss any fire prevention or protection features that were going to be involved in the project, especially around the battery. So it's a Tesla Megapack that we'll be using. And there's various fire testing protocol that have been done for it in different sorts of the battery management system, a site controller and monitoring, the electrical fault protection devices, the electrical fault protection devices, and the deflagration control system that are all built into that battery. So there will be somebody on, on a remote end 24/7 that will have access to anything going on with the battery and they'll automatically get a notification if there are any abnormal events occurring. And we also wanted to note that within New York City, the FDNY actually has approved this product as of July 19, 2022. And it has a just under two-year approval before they go up for a renewal. But they are very stringent in New York City on what they do and do not approve. So we did want to bring that to everyone's attention tonight. We are also asked about our emergency operations plan. So as we are the owner and long-term operator, we will be aware of day-to-day operations of the system. We do have, we do have an action plan in place that if there is an emergency, we will work with the property owner, the local jurisdictions, any emergency authorities that are deemed necessary, and just local operations and maintenance partners that we can better prepare this plan for Tewksbury itself. So it will include training with the local fire department, other emergency response teams to better understand the best way to perform a safe shutdown of the system. We'll have a mapped-out exact location of the shut-off and disconnect components. Everything will be labeled properly. We'll have a detailed emergency shutdown procedure that is on near the disconnect switch. And we will have an EcoG employee or company representative that will be at the site within 24 hours of the notification of an emergency event. And we will have a primary list, a list of our primary and secondary contacts for a member of the EcoG team that should be notified if there is an emergency. And we'll definitely post it anywhere that the local fire department, property owner need us to and in any locations where emergency access would be necessary to access, to get on in the property. Decommissioning plan. So we were also informed that we should prepare a decommissioning and surety plan. So we have the responsibility to, EcoG holds the responsibility to complete decommissioning of the system at the end of its useful life. And that will be part of our agreement with Thermoniton Analizers. And we are required to complete the removal of the system, repair any damage caused on the premises. Within 120 days after the termination of system life, we shall complete the complete removal and restoration at EcoG's expense. Anything that is recyclable will be disposed of following the properly, proper recycling guidelines at the time or repurposed as it could be, as they could be applicable. And if required, we can provide the financial surety to ensure the proper removal of this, of these items. And we can also provide the cash surety or decommission bond if necessary. So some environmental benefits to look at. So this proposed project at, sorry, at Two Radcliffe Road will produce 1,320,000 kilowatt hours of electricity per year. So according to the US EPA, the carbon dioxide equivalent of the EcoG's clean energy generation for this project is over 1,000 tons of carbon per year, equivalent to the amount of carbon sequestered in 1,107 acres of US forests in one year, or the amount of carbon sequestered by 15,000, nearly 15,500 tree seedlings that have been grown for 10 years. And the battery, battery, battery energy storage system will result in approximately a 15% reduction in onsite peak demand, which will help to support the system resiliency during times of great stress. And just a few other benefits from this project. So Thermoniton Analizers will benefit financially through participation in Massachusetts MA SMART program. And it will allow for the purchase power agreement to, and secure benefits for the property as the project will receive a 20-year reduced rate upon confirmation of the project's operational status, resulting in utility bill savings. And for the Tewksbury community, we, the project will provide clean electricity to the local grid without impacting open space, trees, or greenfield areas, utilizes an already developed impervious surface within the office research zone, and it avoids impacting natural features in the public. It will increase the output of clean solar energy to Massachusetts, aiding in meeting the state's goal of net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. And there is an expected additional tax revenue to Tewksbury from EcoG, which can be used to support local services. So questions, comments, next steps? We, we received from Planner Louder these, sorry, we went through the town staff comments and had prepared them. And in one of our next steps, Planner Louder had sent us over her comments as well as the engineering departments, which were in the process of working through. And we'll definitely have those in our next submission. And we look forward to hearing some questions, comments from the planning board, from the public. And if there are any follow-up questions from us about our proper next steps, we will set up a follow-up meeting with the town staff as deemed necessary upon our next submission. And in a respectable timeframe, we will have our following submission over to the planning board to continue along with this project. So thank you again for your time tonight, and we look forward to hearing what all of you have to say.
Very good. Mr. Fatsiah?
What did you pass, Mr. Fowler?
I already had the answers right here.
I got you. Thank you for the submission. It looks great. So my question is, can, any chance of you coming back next time with some renderings? I've seen some renderings on, on, on the internet as far as where these are located. And I just think for the public's view, they can see the rendering, what it's gonna look like. I don't think it's gonna be too, you know, intrusive to the communities when these are up and running. So that'll be a nice, nice added feature for us. So, so having seen your presentation here, any potential hazardous? If anything happens at the, at the site, any hazardous like dispersing into the community? Is that possible or not?
Not from the canopy systems or the solar panels themselves. No, those are not hazardous materials. The solar panels are primarily silicon, as well as whatever aluminum or copper wiring they have, and then a glass covering. The canopy structures themselves are aluminum and/or steel, so no concerns about those. The only chemical materials on site will be in the battery energy storage system, which is a lithium ion system. And as we expressed, that system is in fact self-contained. It will come to us in a container. It is not disparate parts. So any, if there were, in the event of an accident, any sort of dispersal, it would be self-contained within that system. So it would not be dispersed into the community, even though there are chemicals within that.
And you're gonna work out that training with the Tewksbury Fire Department, correct?
Absolutely.
Police Department too, or just the fire?
If the police department would like to be involved, we would be happy to do training with them as well.
Okay. And you have cameras on site and so forth? All that security features in place?
We can install cameras on our own system. I believe the owner of that site, Thermon Fisher, has cameras on their own parking lot. We would have to verify with them whether they have their own. But we do for monitoring purposes install cameras.
Just concerned with people going in there, tampering with the, with the systems and so forth and so on.
Okay.
You know, nowadays, we have to worry about that. But some facilities being attacked and so forth and, you know. So that's one of my concerns. It's a large area you're gonna encompass there. So, so the canopies are gonna be, what, 13.6 feet high? That's enough for a fire truck to get in there, or somebody higher is high enough? Yeah?
Correct.
I thought it was a 14-foot height restriction, but not 13.6, is that the number?
To our knowledge, it's 13.6, but we can definitely check through the Tewksbury zoning to make sure we are compliant with that.
Okay, good. With that, I'm all set right now.
All right, Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our cleaning director has given us a letter here on the 22nd. Did you receive that? Have you addressed all of these items?
We are in the process of addressing all of them, and we will definitely have them within the next few weeks.
Do you think you'd be able to address them by the end of tonight? No. Will you be addressing it by the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Then, Mr. Chairman, all set.
All right, Mr. Champa?
I work for an electrical contractor, so I have questions. You said that the battery unit is self-contained. Two things, is it, I know in a lot of instances, we prefer to have redundant containment. You know, for fuel oil piping in a building, it's a double-wall pipe. Is it a redundant containment, or are we just saying because it's in a box, it's contained?
That is a great question. I would have to defer to our engineering team if we may do that and then get a response to you by the next meeting.
Absolutely. We're just getting to know each other, so. Also, and we do this regularly, I would like to see leak detection in there that would then send a remote signal to indicate, right? What we don't want, what we don't want is our first indication of a problem to be a fire, an explosion, or something leaking into the ground and maybe eventually getting into groundwater. So I would recommend having leak detection inside the containment that notifies resources on the outside. Will, and understanding that you're gonna come back, will there be wind load calc? These are some pretty hefty-sized canopies. I mean, this is, this is massive. I mean, we're talking about like airplanes, you know, airplanes can park under these things. So I would assume wind load calculations would be necessary and part of the structural review for all of that. Who's responsible for property damage? Wind comes in, blows a panel loose, goes through somebody's windshield?
Yeah, so EcoG carries insurance on the entire system for exactly that sort of event. So we have both insurance on our property as well as a general liability policy to cover for any event of that sort. But to address the wind loading and the risk of that happening, these canopies are of course designed directly by the manufacturers. So these are not designed by EcoG. They are designed by those who will be building these systems. And they do provide full wind load calculations as well as structural calculations for the foundations themselves to ensure that those are properly fastened. But yes, in the event of something like that, EcoG does carry insurance on the system itself.
Okay, so we would want to make sure the town has a record of who to contact in case there's a claim?
Absolutely.
And also, in your operation and maintenance, months, years of wind will loosen those fasteners. So obviously, coming back on some sort of, you know, timely basis, whether it's annual, biannual, to re-tighten the entire array would be very beneficial to the long-term success of this project.
Absolutely. We do have annual, at a minimum, annual operation and maintenance visits for preventative maintenance purposes. So those would be checked during those visits.
Okay. Will our first responders need to have any special equipment where potentially we could have a chemical fire if something drastic were to happen with the batteries? And obviously, first responders, we always have to think of worst-case scenario.
My understanding is they would not. Again, we would check with our engineering team as well as bring that question probably back to Tesla to confirm that. But my understanding is that with the systems that are in place within the containment, there would not be any special equipment required, but we can check.
Okay. And then, just a small thing is, in your report here, it says that you will provide clean electricity to the local grid without impacting open space, trees, or greenfield areas. However, on the previous page of your proposal, you are in fact removing trees. Are those trees being replaced somewhere else on site so that we have a net zero loss of tree?
That is not included in our current plans. We would be happy to find a space for that if that were a requirement. Although, given the arrangement of this lot, that might be very difficult. Their parking lot goes almost all the way to the road. There are very little green areas to replace trees without impacting the canopies themselves. With the trees that are being removed, we're removing the bare minimum to make this project feasible. So it is a minimal impact on trees. That is correct.
Okay. Just, your proposal said there will be no impact to the trees, but there is an impact to the trees, so.
Understood, yes. There is a minimal impact to the trees. We can revise that.
Okay. No further questions.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thanks, Mr. Champa, for covering those, those important electrical considerations. And the, you know, the wind load calc was going to be one of my questions. So, so we have, we have kind of a, you'll get back to us on that. That's pretty important. But all that being said, I mean, I think, I think these types of projects are awesome projects as far as some of the benefits is, it reduces the heat island effect, which is, which is the sun reflecting off of hardscape surfaces. And that, that definitely helps the immediate environment there. So I think that, I just happened to see one of these going up, down at the State Trade Bank, down in Quincy. Is that one of your projects, or no? Yeah, and it's pretty, pretty substantial construction. I can say that, you know what I mean? For it to blow over, it's, it's gonna take some, it's gonna take some, some wind. So I, I was looking at the, the decommissioning portion of your presentation there, and I noticed that you carry a bond, or you offer a bond. Now, is that bond for the building owner or the property owner? Is that for the town? Like, what if the company goes away? And then all of a sudden, it's time to decommission, you know, and either a new tenant or the town or whatever, you know, who, who, who is the recipient of that, of that, of that, of the decommissioning bond?
We have placed them with either, we have, we have done both scenarios. We have placed decommissioning bonds directly with property owners. We have also placed them directly with towns. It really depends on the jurisdiction and their preference on who holds that surety. We are open to either, whichever you prefer.
I think that would be an important conversation for us to have going forward.
Ms. Lou?
The bylaw requires that the town holds it. I'm trying to find the citation right now, but we do.
Great.
Asked an answer. And the, the electricity is going into, is it like a, like a virtual metering type thing? Is it going to the grid, or is it, or is a customer using the electricity? And then the, any access goes back into the grid?
The latter. So it is behind the existing customer meter. So it will be in that metering with the existing customer on site. So they will be the primary user of the electricity. Of course, if it outweighs their load at that moment, it will go back onto the grid.
And I'm just curious, do they still do SREC, Solar Renewable Energy Credits? Or is that a thing gone by?
Those have been phased out with the advent of the SMART program. So actually, the value of this SREC is included within the SMART program value that this project is receiving.
So in addition to getting to use the, the green energy, the customer gets to lock in a rate for 20 years? Is that my understanding with a power process agreement with the, with the, yeah? I mean, that seems like a pretty good, a pretty good, I'll be excited to see that project get up and running. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, so the only thing I'd say is, just to hit on a couple of these, take a look, see if there's someplace you can put some of the trees back. You know, it would be, you know, whatever you can net out would be, you know, ideal. Just take a look. Obviously, we're a green community, so this is the kind of thing that we, you know, we're gonna want to have so long as it works. So if you can settle up your issues with the engineering department, making sure you get all the things they need, then, you know, I think you'll be well anyway.
I was just gonna say, it's mostly me this time.
Oh. We get him settled, Ms. Lou, and then, you know, when you come back, hopefully, we'll be in a position to, you know, close this out. Like I said, obviously, it's something that the town likes, so. And, you know, seems like, seems like it will work fine on the site. And it's not gonna bother anybody, so. All right, with that, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Going once, twice, return to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Making motions, Mr. Chairman, to continue the public hearing?
All right, we're gonna look.
Two weeks, good time?
Continue this to 7:20.
Yeah.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, perfect. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm gonna keep you on the record as much as possible. All right, moving on to Agenda Item F, 770 Main Street. Continued from our 313 meeting. Do anybody hear?
Good evening, Ben Ausgood, Ranger Engineering Group. At the last meeting, we talked a bit about the scale of our project. And the board raised some concern about the size of the building, number of parking spaces, and proximity of the parking spaces to the property lines. So what we did, went back and spoke to the owner about reducing the size. And generally, this plan reduces the size of the daycare from 10,000 square feet to 9,000 square feet. And we've also reduced the number of students to 150. So what this allowed us to do was to make the parking lot, we actually added, we took 10 feet off the front of the building, added five feet to the depth of the parking lot. And what that does is it made the driveways wider, you know, gave more room for maneuverability. The reduction in the number of students also reduced the parking requirement. So we now have 36 spaces, and under the zoning bylaw, 36 are required. So we no longer need a parking. So we no longer need a parking waiver.
If I could.
Just grab the mobile mic. Yeah, thank you.
So as you can see, this is the turning plan. We were tight before, and that extra width allows us, you can see, we have plenty of room here now to get a fire truck in. And this is the trash truck. The trash truck would have to go in reverse, the rear load trash truck, but the front load could come in this way too, so. Just two. We did, previously, we had some reserved spaces here, but we've just shown that as green area, and there was one here because we've now met the parking requirement, so we didn't need any reserved spaces. These aisleways are 30 feet, 36 feet in the front, 28 and a half and 28 and a half on each side. So we lost, reduced a space in here as well. So that's, that's the summary of the changes, so. What I planned to do is just, I wanted to get the board consensus that these changes were okay. We've been working to finalize the plan. We'll submit finalized plans if the board feels that it's okay. Get it in for all the final reviews and come back at the next meeting.
All right, we'll settle you. Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real happy with the downsizing of the building a little bit. I think, like you said, it was very, very, very tight.
It was.
So, yeah, you agree? Okay, great.
I agree.
We worked on that, we worked on that for a little while with you, so I'm glad you came around. What I don't see here, and we talked about it at one of our last meetings, is any sidewalk area for people coming out of their car and walking up a potential sidewalk on either side?
Yep.
So that they wouldn't be walking into traffic with their children going to drop off at daycare?
Yep.
Was that ever discussed?
What we talked about was the possibility of adding striping along the rear of the parking spaces. It would be like a crosswalk. And we could do that. It's hard to make a sidewalk. It's going to squeeze everything in, but... Where we have 28 and a half feet, we could put a four-foot striped walkway right along the back of these spaces. There would just be an area of warning and that would be a walkway, sort of like a crosswalk. We could just do it in the white striping. So that would show people where to walk, show vehicles that that's where people are walking.
Okay.
And that's, I think that would work well, and that's another benefit of having these wider lanes.
Yeah.
Normal lane is 24 feet, these are 28, so we have plenty of room to put a four-foot crosswalk behind the spaces.
Yeah, that would be amiable to me as far as doing something like that. Again, safety is my first concern here. You have mothers with students, I mean, young children that are going to be dropping off at daycare. Last thing I want to see is a child, some child, walking out into that parking lot.
Right.
And getting, I mean, the striping is one thing, but hopefully that will suffice. Sidewalk, so they walk inside would have been better, in my opinion, so that they would be walking out of traffic rather than into traffic.
Right.
So, so you moved the building back how far off the street now?
We just took 10 feet off the front, so it's back 10. The front face is 10 feet further away from the road. The other faces stayed exactly where they were.
Okay. As you're aware, my other concern was the people possibly backing out, backing up traffic on Main Street.
Right.
But, I mean, we reduced the number...
We did eliminate three spaces on that right side, so they really won't, I think we've taken care of that conflict.
So people will have to go to the other side of the front of the building or to the left side of the building, parking area, if there's spots and not be stuck right there?
Right.
Right? Okay.
And it's one-way circulation counterclockwise.
Okay. All right, with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also appreciate you taking a little look at the density of the project. I think you did the right thing there. And I think if you can find a way to, you know, to stripe off a walkway area or, you know, somehow identify a, you know, common area, I'm sure that will be determined once the building opens. So I'm perfectly okay with the progress that we made. Thank you.
Chair?
Just one comment to add on to the striping is there is an ADA ramp at the front of the property leading to Main Street. I would suggest having your striping, make a pass and connect to that so that we have a clear ADA access, especially where your handicap spaces are at the front of the building. We want to make sure that if the people there wanted to get out onto the sidewalk for some reason, that, you know, we kind of show them the way, that we make that provision.
Yep.
That's all I have, sorry.
Mr. Fowler?
Mr. Chair, I am all set. Everything has been discussed and all the things we asked for are in here.
All right, the chair's fine as well, so we look forward to the full plan set. But I think this will take care of what was holding up the original version. So I think once you get everything drawn up and get everything signed off from engineering, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. All right? All right, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Seeing none, turn to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Making motions, Mr. Chairman, to continue the public hearing to April 10.
All right, do we have, what time do we have for that?
7:25.
7:25, all right, so 7:25?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, I think that would be a good time.
Probably.
All right, so why don't we take, we have a motion to table the remainder of the agenda for now?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, motion carries. We put everything else on the table because, as I see, it looks like we have distinguished guests arriving and the most distinguished guest up here at the table with us for what we're going to do right now, which is discuss Mr. Fowler, which I'm sure he's going to love for the next few minutes. So, as everybody else sort of gets settled, a couple of things I wanted to say is typically the kind of thing I would do off the cuff, but I decided I'm going to read this one because I didn't want to miss anything, so. All right, tonight we have the opportunity to recognize an example of dedication and devotion to public service that we will not likely witness again. Tonight, Mr. Fowler concludes 40-year tenure as a valued member of the Tuxbury Planning Board. This in and of itself would be impressive enough as a monument to civic involvement and responsibility, things that have diminished and eroded in recent years. But when you take Mr. Fowler's 40 years on the planning board, another 30 years plus as a member of the Tuxbury Fire Department, and sprinkle in another decade plus as a reserve officer for the Tuxbury Police on top, you have over 80 years of dedicated public service to the town and the residents of Tuxbury. That's enough civic duty to cover 10 people, let alone one. Mr. Fowler represents the best example of something we can all aspire to, which is putting others ahead of just our own self-interest and striving to give something back to your community. This is a disappearing art, and those willing to do it for parts of six decades are the rarest exceptions rather than the rule. Tonight, we celebrate and thank Mr. Fowler for all he has done on the planning board and his stewardship through the many changes and difficult issues faced by the board and the town. I know that Mr. Fowler considered stepping away prior to his most recent term, but he wanted to help see the new zoning bylaw through its development and adoption before departure. Because he knew how important the process was going to be to the future of the town, little did he know that the process would take nearly the entire five-year term to see to its fruition. Perhaps a few of us conspired to make sure that it took that long to keep Mr. Fowler around. This board will feel the loss of Mr. Fowler's vast experience and immeasurable institutional knowledge upon his departure, as I know I will. But even more so will be his leadership, mentorship, and friendship as a fellow board member that I'll miss above all. Mr. Fowler's seat may be filled, but his shoes never can be. Although it's unlikely that any of us will challenge Mr. Fowler's extraordinary example of longevity in public service, I think we can each attempt to honor his example and his service in at least a small way by endeavoring to embrace one of his favorite sayings. We can disagree without being disagreeable. It seems like a simple creed, but it's lost on so many in today's public discourse. I believe I speak for everyone present when I say that we can agree that we owe Mr. Fowler a debt of appreciation and gratitude for all his time and efforts on behalf of the town and its residents. We wish Mr. Fowler the very best as he steps back and steps away from the planning board on behalf of the board, past and present, as well as myself. Thank you, Bob. It's been an honor and a pleasure. I see around the room we have some of our elected officials. I think we'll start with Mr. Feingold. Go ahead, Mr. Robinson. Gentlemen, obviously, wherever you like, podium or the desk in front of us is completely up to you.
I was trying, I was trying to do the math, so I must have figured, so not only is Bob an amazing member of the planning board, you had to be the youngest one. You started when you were 10 years old, right? That probably makes sense why the math adds up, but, you know, yeah. You know, one of my, one of my favorite quotes from JFK is, he says that things just don't happen, people make them happen. And when I think about Bob a lot is that he has made things happen. And I think that when you serve a community in any capacity, whether it's on the fire department, police department, on the planning board, there's only one thing that you really want to accomplish. And that one thing is you want to make the community better than when you started. And I can honestly tell you that this guy has made this town better. And not only has he made it better, but he's done it with such class, with such dignity, and he's the definition of what we say is what is a true gentleman. So thank you for being who you are, and thank you for making the town of Tuxbury so much better.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, Bob, it's hard to top that, but you started on this board when I was negative seven years old. So I owe you, as well as your colleagues, a thank you for shaping the town that I grew up in and in a sense, making myself and everyone that followed behind until we are today. It's often thankless, now with the advent of social media, heavily criticized about knowing the whole facts. I certainly learned new vocabulary when hearing about you and your board sometimes, but despite all that, you persevered and you're one of those folks behind the scene that takes a town, makes it a, makes it a community a home in a way. So for that, part of the younger generation that benefited from those uncompensated long nights, those spirited debates amongst you and the public, other board members and that through the years, a sincere heartfelt thanks and gratitude there, and also on a personal level for being there, passing back knowledge that you learned cutting your teeth in local politics, which I think makes boxing look like a fair and easy sport overall sometimes. So thank you for your perseverance and being Tuxbury tough as we were told to be growing up, so you're a helpful example.
Bob, we need you to come up. We have a bunch of citations, so please, please come up.
Yes, we do.
First person we have from the Senate is, being known nationally, Senator, congratulations. Bob Fowler, congratulations. Your dedication to Tuxbury and your 40 years of service on the planning board, signed by the Senate President, Karen Smith, Clark Michael Early, and myself, State Senator Barry Farm.
And then we also have a list of citations here, and it was a foul recognition after 40 years of dedicated service to Tuxbury for your various works on the planning board preservation, and other two members of the committee, the fire department, and we wish you well, we are retiring. I also want to say, this was thrown on behalf of all of us, obviously, this is the state house here, as a bandit. It was a hell of a thing for people, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Barry. Thanks, Dave.
All right, so I'm going to try and keep this from being too much of a public comment session, but I do have noticed that there are a couple of former members of the planning board in the audience. If they wish to say something, I'd be happy to have you come up. It's up to you. I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you want to, you're free to.
Mr. Chair, I have one comment I'd like to make.
Okay.
And this is directed towards that gentleman right there who just sat down. He'll understand this. In your, in your letter, in your speech, you mentioned about not being disagreeable when you didn't disagree, when you didn't agree. Thank you. I was on the board, well, for many years with Mr. Plunkett. He is a, he was the epitome of someone you could have an argument with, but leave with a smile on your face because you would come to an agreement after you did so, as I did with Mrs., I don't want to embarrass you, no. But David, I can remember that many, many, many times. And that's the way we were, that's the way we worked, and that's how we got things done. Thank you.
Mr. Plunkett, did you want to come up? It's up to you.
Hi, members of the planning boards.
Oh, my gosh.
Rich Crowe and Nancy Reed.
Richard. You guys have forum, so.
So we posted, Bob, we're waiting outside. We posted on the board.
Richard, pull up. Pull up front.
But Bob, you know, what you were saying, that's your story in terms of, one of the greatest memories I have on that board was sometimes we'd be on opposite sides, and by the time it was over, and I remember sometimes people would say, "Joe, I thought Bob was opposed to that." And I goes, "Well, he might have been opposed to it, but he knew how to count the votes, and then he worked to make it what he thought would be better for the town." And we would end up coming to a compromise. You always got your points across, and what you were saying, how you operated these 40 years that I admired so much, that was, we always knew, we had arguments as gentlemen or gentle people, and at the end, there was never a question as to your motivation. And it was such an honor to have spent 20 years on the board with you, and this town owes such a, you know, debt of gratitude to you for what you've done for this town and how you have carried yourself through those years in the positions. Everyone said it can become tense, it can become hostile, and you have all different things wrong, but it was such an honor to be with you, Bob, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you. Thank you. And likewise.
I love you, Bob. And I echo everything that David had just said, as well as our esteemed chairman. I always found, Bob, you're a solution person. Find a solution, find the middle ground, find where people can move forward. And everyone went away feeling like everything's going to be okay. And I learned so much from you, from decorum, from just everything, presents, manners, everything, Bob.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everything that you've done for the town. And I wanted to say, the one thing I really remembered was when I was on the board at the beginning, and there was something going on at North Tuxbury, up at Raytheon. They had some unidentified materials that had come in, and one night you had to skip a meeting and go to do that. a meeting and go to do that as a fireperson. And I thought, you know, how much can one person do? Here he is, he was going to be at the planning board meeting, and now he has to go up to Raytheon and investigate a mysterious material that, you know, we didn't know what it was. And meanwhile, the meeting went on, and we were all worried about you, you know? We were all like, you know, Bob's up there, we're here, oh, next item, you know? That is, but that's you, Bob. You went right up there, you didn't hesitate. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, I think, Bob, when you came to the planning board, similar routes, you were on the conservation commission. And rumor is that my wife actually took the spot on the concom commission when you left, my wife Barbara. So, being on the conservation commission, when I came onto the planning board, I thought, I got this, I can handle this. And it didn't take me long to realize I had a lot to learn. Everything was different, different perspective. And so, I appreciated your patience with me and your generosity in sharing your knowledge of expertise. I truly appreciate that. It helped immensely.
Thank you.
And the other thing is that with you on the board, it gave me confidence, because I know that whatever decision the board made would have been thoroughly vetted, discussed, and based on sound fact and rationale. So, it gave me a lot of confidence to have someone like you with us.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. That means a lot. All right. Hello, Mr. Kraus. Mr. Fowler, how are you? Boy, I haven't seen you in a long time. I know, I know. So, I can't really add to, you know, the whole finding the middle ground, you know, you were great at that. I loved working with you on the planning board. One of the things that stuck out in my mind, you know, in the midst of antiquity now, but I was trying to figure out how to get sidewalks in a subdivision, and you came up with a compromise that was like, that's a winner, you know? And I was a little embarrassed that I hadn't thought of it, but I was really grateful that you had, and it just, but that's kind of a microcosm of how you work, you know? So, and you brought them together. But there is one thing I'm kind of annoyed at you about. You know, I've gotten gray, fat, bald, and you still look the same. That's pretty annoying, so. Believe me, it wasn't the board that did it. Not, no, not with me, no, absolutely not in the hands, but seriously, Bob, you look great on, and. Thank you. Good genes, I guess. I'm so glad I was able to work with you. Thank you. Likewise. Likewise. All right, Mr. Delaney, I see you lurking in the back of the room. Did you not want to be put on the spot, or did you want to come up and speak as well?
No, I'm too emotional.
All right, I wasn't sure. I didn't want to force you up here, but I wanted to give you the chance.
I'm embarrassed for myself.
That's all right, I just wanted to give you a chance.
I'm a wonderful guy to work with.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Thank you all. All right. All right, I'll let the board, if anyone on the board wants to speak, and then we'll have one more thing. But, Mr. Chairman, you're the newest, so I'll let you go first.
Well, I may be the newest compatriot of Mr. Fowler on the planning board, and I am sorry that our time together is going to be this short. I first got to know Bob when my wife volunteered for the 9/11 memorial committee. We were, I guess we were kind of united by Fred Simon, which.
Yes.
He probably united many members of our town, and also another person that made this community better. All I can say is that I have a deep appreciation of the legacy that Bob is leaving as he takes his leave from the board, and I will do my best, if I'm fortunate enough, to be elected to his seat on April 1st, to continue that legacy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, I also got to know you many, many years ago, signholding for one politician or another, but always being involved in trying to do the right thing for the town of Tuxbury in the 9/11 commission. I thank you for, you know, for kind of nurse-mating me along as a new board member, and for helping out and offering some good advice when needed, and I appreciate everything. I wish you all the best, and I hope that we can continue your legacy here on the planning board.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank everybody that was here tonight for Bob Fowler. You're not going to find a better guy than Bob. I've known you for a number of years, Bob. You know, and I had reached out to Mr. Kraus, and he finally called me back, which was nice, you know, an old name from the past I thought Bob would enjoy. And I know Mr. Sadrick reached out to Mr. Sweet, who couldn't make it with us tonight, but we have a lot of board members that showed up, and just a credit to you, Bob, as a 40-year member and as a gentleman you are. One person we haven't mentioned is Dawn. Dawn's sitting back in the background there, all right, who's been, was here for 20 years or so with you, Bob, I think. And now she's running for clerk in the town of Tuxbury, talks to the town of Barriker, I'm sorry, so. Dawn, good luck with that, and I know it's coming up on Saturday. You were a big help to me on the planning board as well when I first came in, as well as Bob. You know, I can remember as a new guy coming into the planning board, you know, Mr. Fowler always was, you know, that force behind you that was always, gave you the confidence of doing the right thing. We'd have some discussions here and there, and I can always remember being a new guy, he said, "Yeah, you look pretty good today, Vinny. What kind of shirt's that?" So, we had a running joke back and forth over some of our meetings, what type of shirt I have on tonight. So, tonight, Bob, I have a Brooks Brothers shirt on, just in case you want to know, so.
But I agree for you. I like it.
But Bob, your friendship over the years, your wisdom, your support for myself, and your dedication to the Tuxbury residents is unfound. It's just amazing. 40 years, I mean, I've been in doing this for nine years, and it's been a struggle for nine years. You know what the temperature of the town is now with all this development going on and some of the issues that we have to deal with, but you've always had my back, Bob. I appreciate it. It's not a goodbye to you. I know we'll be seeing it one another again, I'm sure, through hockey or something, but just continued success and health, Bob, for you going forward.
Thank you.
All right? Good luck.
All right. So, falls to me to try to wrap this up, otherwise we will speak for 40 years about Mr. Fowler, and none of us want that, because then you'll never get out of here. So, the other members, just go up, we have something. So. So. So, obviously, we had our representatives, they gave you their, this is to the planning board. Thank you for all of your service, friendship, and everything you've done for the town. Thank you. Thank you. Presented by Robert Fowler, over the 40 years dedicated service to Tuxbury Planning Board, 2023. Thank you. Thank you. I have two comments. Got it? Very shocking. Do the right thing. Anytime you're looking at a plan or anything, do the right thing and get the job done. A little by that, I hope you all do too. Thank you. Thank you. (applause) Yeah. Will it take two minutes? Yeah. I want to give you opportunity to talk to, set loading and all that. So, we'll resume in two minutes. We're going to bring this back to order. We're going to put Mr. Fowler back to work for just a little bit longer, see if we can't wrap this up. All right, so can I have motion to take the tabled items back and put them back on the table?
So moved.
A motion made in second, all of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Nope, Mr. Fowler, we're putting you back to work for a little bit longer.
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on to agenda item F. No, we just finished F, I'm sorry. Moving on to agenda item G, that's One Main Street, they asked to be continued to our 4:10 meeting. What time do we have? I don't want to cheat one.
7:15.
All right, so we have a motion to continue that to 7:15. I have to, I think so, yeah. 7:15. Do we have motion?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all of the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. That moves us on to agenda item H, 21, 22 Main Street. This is continued from our 3:13 meeting. Gentlemen, once you get settled, give your names for the record, and the floor is yours.
I don't have them, Steve. That's fine. I'll be good. Don't have them? No, I got them.
Thank you to the chair and members of the board. My name is Valerio Romano for the Stories Company from VGR Law Firm. I'm the attorney for Stories Company. I'm joined by Ian Ainsley, our professional engineer from Eisner Brand, and the founder of Stories, Davis Patel, this evening. Thank you very much. Not to belabor the Mr. Fowler thing, but I've only been here six weeks, but I tell you, his sort of smile and way he engages with people sitting on this side of the desk, like, makes me feel, it's just made me feel comfortable and much, just better, like, approaching the board, just, he's engaged, so anyway, it's, you know, it's going to be a hard hit for the town to lose somebody who could do this to a developer, an applicant, very positive interaction. So, yeah, so what we've done so far, we've provided, since our last meeting, we've provided a rendering from the neighbors' side of the fence, which I know was requested. I think it actually looks fantastic. We have a board with it, it's the bottom right there on the board as well, but we've also provided digital images and physical copies. We've also provided, I'm sorry, I actually don't have my glasses this evening, we've written an updated landscaping plan that shows the eight-foot fence with the trees, which I know we expanded or raised from the six-foot. I think we've satisfied all of planning's comments on our proposed application, and we have a couple outstanding comments from engineering that we hope to get the answers in in the next couple of days. We've also provided a signage plan, and I know that there was some sort of back and forth on signage, but I think we're pretty much in agreement. We have 90 square feet of available signage for the two units, and I spoke to our client, we would be happy to make them very symmetrical and have each sign be 45 square feet, so I think that's resolved as well. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ian Ainsley to discuss any of the, you know, submitted materials, and then, of course, any questions that we can answer from the board. Thank you.
So, I'm going to kind of head over to the boards.
You should grab the microphone, report him if you would.
So, one of the things that we've provided, I believe at the board's request, is a rendering, 3D rendering of the building, including a perspective of what the neighbors would see from their side of the property. They're happy to come up and take a look. They're welcome to, you know, we'll give them copies of this, happy to have them, you know, give us what they think and take their feedback and incorporate it. I think through, you know, discussions with them, we have raised the fence, which was six feet before, to eight feet. We think this is a good, happy medium where it won't be too big, too small. You can see here, you know, from our rendering between the eight-foot fence and the trees, you're really not seeing much of that building back there. We did also put some doors and windows on that kind of back facade. I know the board kind of had an issue with the long blank space, so we did try to do that. One of the things we did at the request of the board was to turn this front aisle into a one-way, so now the entire building is encircled by a 20-foot-plus-wide one-way. You come in, you take a right, go all the way around the building, it's a stop sign, stop bar, where you come out here, so you're not going to have that four-way traffic, you're going to have one side that's completely stopped and one side not coming in at all. So, we hope that, you know, we've addressed that. And like Val had mentioned, we did submit full revised plans about two weeks ago, attempting to address all of the engineering and planning comments. I think there's a couple left. I don't think they're particularly... I don't think they're particularly difficult to deal with, mostly just kinda water and sewer details and things like that. But the board did see most of these changes last time, because they were pretty much ready to go. The big changes being adding more sidewalk, widening the aisle widths around the building, putting in and replacing the sidewalk along the Main Street frontage. So we did show you that previously. I guess lastly, I'll just briefly show you the signage plan that we provided. So one of the items that was requested was a master signage plan, typical of the site plan application. Our architect provided that. We have a freestanding monument side in the front, kinda where you come in, and then we have signage on the building as well. This is the Stories cannabis side. Since we don't know our tenant yet, we don't know, you know, exactly what the other sign will look like, but we've taken up about half of the allowed square footage, so our expectation is it'll be pretty similar. So I think those are kinda the main points, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Alright, start with, start with Mr. Duffy, let's start.
I see that your, the, has the traffic study been peer-reviewed?
I don't believe it's been peer-reviewed. I know that we submitted it, and as far as I know, engineering and planning have looked at it, if not commented on as far as I know.
I mean, it's basically saying that there's no substantial impact to the area traffic?
It was pretty minimal, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Through the chairs, I think it's less than 100 vehicle trips at the, at the peak hours with the traffic study.
100 peak hour trips?
100, less than 100 vehicle trips during the AM peak hours. I believe we submitted it before our last hearing, right?
Yep.
So it's been maybe two and a half weeks since we submitted it.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chip.
Just one comment, and I don't know if it's gonna come on a later plan, but you have your 10 spaces of parking, and then your main parking in front of the building. There's two sidewalks that clearly the 10 people are gonna walk along from one sidewalk to the other, across the main egress now, along with the stop bar. I just wanted to know if it'd be worth considering putting a crosswalk there.
We do have a crosswalk right across.
It is there.
It is there, yeah.
It's just not on the plan that I'm looking at.
Yeah, yeah, before it wasn't there, so, you know, we did add it. Yeah.
Okay, no further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the rendering of the fence, is the fence gonna be black?
It looks like from the rendering, our proposed fence is a dark brown, sorry.
Dark brown?
Yeah, it's a dark brown. It's that bottom right one, and we had submitted it. It seems like it fits in well with the foliage, but I had, our neighbor is here, and we haven't had a chance to communicate, you know, more thoroughly about this, but this is, you know, the updated plan based on the feedback we got at the last hearing.
Okay. Alright, so just moving forward, I wanna commend you guys both for a great package you put together for us.
Thank you, Mr. Patel, yeah.
Your attention to the details, after we discussed some issues back to you guys, you've have been willing to cooperate with us all the time, and I just think it's a complete package that we've submitted to us, and we don't get that all the time. We do it sometimes, but I just, I just wanted to take the time to commend you guys for a job well done on this plan, you know. Took some time to get there, but I think we're just about there, you know, and once we get some feedback from engineering, I think we'll be good to go. But with that, I'm all set, Mr. Chip.
Mr. Fowler.
I think they've answered all the questions that I presented to them. I know they changed the handicap spots, added two more handicapped spaces, which I really thought two were insufficient. And the egress and the turning areas have proved to be sufficient, so I am all set for that.
Alright, so you still have some engineering to clear up. As far as the peer review for traffic, we have not yet said that, is that right?
That's correct. The engineering division did not find anything that they specifically wanted peer-reviewed about it. That is up to the board's discretion.
Okay, that's good enough. Alright, so that's fine, that's fine with me. That's it from the board. I'll throw it out. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns, please come up. If we could just have you slide the easel to my left, yeah, please. That way, if anybody comes up to the podium, the camera can pick them up.
Hello, Mark Rappman, 101 member Mac Meadows Lane. I just have a quick question. I know the traffic study hasn't been completed or it hasn't been reviewed, but did they say there's 100 vehicles per, the max per hour going in and out of this location?
So yeah, based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers data, it's, it's under 100 vehicle trips per hour at the peak hours, is what the data for a cannabis dispensary shows.
And that's combined in and out?
Yeah, so it's really 50 trips, and which, if you look at the number of volume that a cannabis dispensary is doing in Massachusetts, even the sort of gangbusters ones are doing, you know, maybe 500, you know, people a day, like the best ones, like the average ones are doing 150 to 200. So when you combine that over a 10-hour day, the 50 vehicle trips makes a ton of sense, and especially if ultimately there'll be three here in Tewksbury, which seems like the number that may happen. We don't know what's gonna get approved by this board, or the Board of Selectmen, and then the cities and towns around us, you know, seeing, you know, 300 or 400 customers a day would be fantastic, and probably higher than we're gonna do, and certainly translates into 50 customers per hour, which is 100 vehicle trips on the outside. And that's, you know, some people will carpool, we'll have two or three people in the same car, but just the numbers that cannabis dispensaries do, those are the numbers in mass. I represent quite a few of them.
Alright, I just, I find it hard to believe, honestly. I, I've seen the one that's in Lowell, that's right down the street. I've watched the vehicles going in and out of the location that have been there. I was there on a Wednesday rainy morning, and I saw 50 vehicles going in and out on Wednesday morning in the rain. They've been talking about how many they do on a weekend, and it's traffic backed up onto the roadway. So I just would like to see, I would like to see as much traffic data as possible to see what's put into this. That intersection, that location, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, prior to this being there, is already backed up, you know, up until South Street. So then you add this, people, 50 vehicles cutting across the traffic to try to get into a location. So people going southbound, or going, I guess, you know, toward Wilmington Way, who would be cutting across the traffic to get in, that's never mind just the people trying to get in and out. It's gonna, during peak hours, my peak hour is 3 to 5 o'clock in PM, and that's when that traffic really backs up in the afternoon. You can't get up and down that roadway. Adding this of something, and this is something they take pride in, which is great. I mean, I'm not, I'm not against the business. I'm just, what I would like to see is mitigation put involved with it. Like, what are you doing to help mitigate traffic? Is there any, is there a D cell lane to help the traffic get in there? Is there something that's being done that helps the vehicles get in and out of this location a lot easier, other than cutting across traffic that's already there? And a lot of people will be getting out of work, going to this location during peak hours. They'll be cutting across traffic, and that traffic is gonna back up into Wilmington. You can tell me there's 50 people, you can tell me there's 20 people. I know the, I've been there, I lived it. Anybody that lives in this town, if you tell them it's a minimal impact, they're gonna laugh you right off the floor, because they're, they know what that is. Everything that comes in front of us is always a minimal impact, but you take minimal impact, and 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 you put them all together, and that's what we have out there right now. The traffic is horrendous, and without some sort of mitigation to be put in place to make it easier for people to get in and out of your place, I mean, it's, the type of business you do is people order online, they come in, they're in and out in five minutes. In, out, goodbye, next person, in, out, goodbye. That's a lot of vehicles going in and out, in and out, in and out. It's like almost having a drive-through there. So when you're putting something that has people that stop in and go out quickly, it's, it isn't like they're sitting there for an hour having dinner. They're coming in, they're grabbing what they need, and they're going out. A lot of people do it. It's gonna be a major traffic impact, and without some sort of type of mitigation, I'd like to see something that you can try to do to at least allow the vehicles to get in, if not out, a little bit easier to merge into that traffic. You only have one lane in both directions in that location. You have a street coming down, where you have Hill Street that comes through there. You've got a busy business next to it. You have a lot of other, and you've got another development that's being built right now, that's also gonna add, they'll tell you, minimal impact, and you're gonna put that minimal impact with this minimal impact, and you're just gonna have a lot more cars going through that intersection. Every time I see something come to town, I welcome it. I just want it to make the town a better place, not cause it more headaches and more problems for the residents trying to get up and through that intersection. People wanna get home, they wanna get to their houses, they wanna go see their kids play sports, they wanna get to, whatever they wanna do, and this, I think, is gonna cause a lot of traffic in that area. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments on this?
Can I just state one thing, if that's alright? I don't know if this is the type of mitigation they're looking for, but we do have a significantly more amount of parking on the property than is required by the town, so spaces for people to get out of the way, you know what I mean, to allow cars to get in, to park their cars, to have them there, and not cause it back up onto the street. We are required to have 28 spaces by the town zoning for this cannabis retailer and another commercial tenant in the building. We have 43, I think, which is almost 50% more than the requirement, so I do think that is worth something. I don't know if that is sufficient, but just figured I would mention that.
Just a question. So in, I guess, 'cause the traffic study, just what I looked at, I guess it's not gonna trigger mitigation in and of itself.
No more than any other development along Main Street, no.
And in the event that you were trying to do that kind of mitigation, that would require Mass Highway to sign off on, correct?
We do need a permit from Mass Highway.
I guess the thing here is that we keep, we run into the same issue, obviously, because, you know, the road is what the road is, but then you're in a position where, you know, to not have any impact would require you to have bad businesses that are unsuccessful and don't have anybody coming to them, which seems counterproductive. So, you know, you know, we'll have an argument over whether it should be a residence, or an argument whether it should be a business. Things need to go in these places, and, you know, the reality is, we don't fully control 38, so we can only do so much, you know, when these things come in. It's kind of above our pay grade dealing with Mass Highway, so.
And I will mention, regardless of what happens on here, we do have to get a permit from MASTOT
Right.
for that connection to their state road, so they will be reviewing this regardless of anything else that happens.
But in terms of the traffic studies, I mean, you know, it's the same as when we get the engineer's information in. You know, the engineer signs off on it. We can argue back and forth about it, but the fact of the matter is, once the engineer, engineering department says, "You've met what you're supposed to meet", it's not really for us to be telling them they're wrong. You know, it's the same thing. The traffic reports, the traffic studies are what they are. We can only simply accept them, see what they say, and go with that. I mean, you know, we can contradict them all we want, but when we ask you for them, all you can do is submit what they say. I mean, there's not a whole lot, much more we can ask for that. Obviously, that area of 38, yes, you know, it's certainly congested, and depending on how successful your business is or isn't, and how quickly people go in and out, yes, there's probably gonna be an impact. I couldn't tell you, you know, beyond what I've seen from the traffic study, what that will be. You know, I don't know how successful you'll be. I don't know how much it will mix and match with however many, you know. We can only do these site by site. You know, I, I can't speak for everybody else, but I can't say, okay, there's gonna be three. There's gonna be two.
Yeah.
That's not us.
Yes.
You know what I mean? So we can only do a hot piece of it. After that, how many we end up with, and how that may or may not change traffic to any one or another of them, you know, all we can do is take what's in front of us for each one, and say, okay, did you do what we asked you to do? Did you bring in what we asked you to bring in? Do the numbers say what the numbers say? And for me, that's as far as I feel like I can take it, and, you know, with what we've had put in front of us for this, I believe we've gotten pretty close to that. You've got some things to do still, obviously, but, you know, I'm not really sure what I'm gonna ask, that you can guarantee me, or us, beyond what, you know, what we have so far. Yeah, and we know, Mr. Chairman, that we have a couple engineering comments outstanding, but I feel like this is a great use for a town that's concerned, you know, with this type of location. We talked about this before. It's not like we're adding, you know, 100 vehicle trips to a residential neighborhood that only gets 20 per, per hour, you know. We're adding 100 vehicle trips to a very busy street where there, you know, in some sense, it's virtually negligible, and we're gonna be a super attentive tenant, you know, business operator in Tewksbury, so. I tend, I tend to agree with you completely, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright, so any other, Mr. Fowler? Oh, that's your album.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In an effort to maybe move this conversation along, perhaps in addition to addressing the remainder of the engineer's comments, perhaps exploring having that be a right turn only out as an option to not stop traffic at, at high traffic hours, so they have to merge right back onto the road, and there's no need to bring traffic to a dead halt to try to take a left. Again, it's just something that could be addressed on the ground, and it wouldn't be something beyond the scope of what we would ask another business moving on to that congested area of Main Street. Just a thought.
I mean, I think that makes great sense. Maybe it's limited to, I'm sorry.
I would say, similar to, we have the hours where you have the extra use of the breakdown lane on 93, 3 to, I think it's 3 to 6, so, you know, to address 3, maybe we start off a little bit longer, 3 to 7.
Your suggestion is simply right, period.
Chairman, I would say maybe possibly a police detail at some of the afternoon hours. The peak hours, I don't think is a factor for you at all, because you're not open till 10 o'clock. Till 10 o'clock is not the peak hour for the morning, but afternoon is an issue, a whole different animal.
I'm uncomfortable with, you know, forcing them to have a police detail.
Not forcing them.
You know what I mean? I mean, that's obviously, that's something that, you know.
It's supposed to be.
Again, it's something above us, I think.
They could do it if they want.
Right, right. Do it if you want, but if it turns out that there's a need for it, I think that's gonna need to come from somewhere, you know, whether it's public safety saying it, or the select board, you know, not us. I don't, I don't feel comfortable putting that as a condition, just, obviously, he's throwing it out there. Think about it, I mean, obviously, if you get that busy, you know, then it may be something that's, you know, some of the other entities are gonna say, you know, "We need to do something about this, it's, it's a problem."
You may be getting it from your customers as well.
Yeah.
Saying, hey, we can't get out, we can't get out of here, we can't get in here, 'cause the traffic's so.
It's not completely unheard of in the cannabis industry. I mean, you know, certainly, we, you know, cannabis retailers that open are frequently closely engaged with the police department. So after this board, as we know, we have to go to the Board of Selectmen and get a host community agreement, which, you know, it's, there's almost, you know, they can, they can decide on those in any, any form they want, so this will come up, you know, again, but we will work very closely with the police department and openness, and I don't, I don't think we object to that. And the times I've done this in the past, you know, a police detail early on, and then the police are like, "I'm sitting here in my car", you know, like not, you know, "This is boring. Like, I don't really need to be here." So, but we're, I think that's, you know, it's not an unheard-of request in the cannabis industry whatsoever, so.
Mr. Chairman. I, I probably would think that if, we were thinking along the lines of a right turn only coming out of there, all I can envision is the guy that wants to head back towards Wilmington is just gonna be whipping a U-turn at MVP, or, or Booty Azers, or Autobody or something there. And, you know, I just don't wanna do a right turn and then create another little, another little issue there, you know, like if that becomes a regular route, basically, you know.
That's fair, but you can't prevent what people do.
It's two single lanes. You know, the other one that we talked about, you know, with, on a right turn only, was, was coming into multiple lanes of traffic in each direction, so taking a left-hand turn was very impractical in that, in that instance. And I think that, you know, short of giving everybody that's on the road driving lessons and courtesy, I think that, that, you know, I think that we should leave that one alone, in my opinion. I think that we should leave that one alone, in my opinion.
All right, so why don't we do it this way, 'cause it'd be easier? Mr. Duffy would prefer he left it out either way. Mr. Fattali?
Same.
Mr. Fowler?
What did you say?
Same.
So he's fine with it being out left or right, the way it is right now?
Okay.
So.
That's fine. Same way.
Again, I think a sign could be a good idea, but not a deal breaker for me. So I would leave it up to their discretion.
I feel the same. But I mean, I guess, you know, what I would say is, as the balance between the two, is that we leave it as an open item, meaning we'll leave it as it is, but should events cause us to revisit it, we may require you to make it right only in the future. Does that make sense?
So are we talking maybe a condition of the permit?
Yep. It'd be a condition, a conditional condition.
I don't think we have a mission.
Meaning, we'll wait and see, and we'll get feedback from Public Safety or whoever, you know.
Oh, we'll get feedback.
Well, yeah, we'll get feedback.
Yeah, we certainly have no objection to that. So whether it's, you know, at the granting of the site plan approval, that we make that a condition of the approval, or whether it's further down the road, because, you know, things have come up, or it's like messing up traffic to the extent, we're okay either way.
Okay.
Just to add a little bit of context to that, so typically, we'll do something like, following six months of active business operations, we'll reevaluate. And if we find that that condition needs to be acted upon.
Yeah, we have that with treatments right now.
Exactly.
We revisit with them on this.
And I think, I can't be sure, but I bet you our cameras will cover a lot of that too. So we'll actually have video footage that we can, like, you know, base the data on as well. So if in six months we decide.
All right, so we'll revisit some of this when you come back in, figure out what you got left with the engineer, or engineering department, and then see you with the community.
I think we'll have the comments back, Mr. Chairman, in the next, you know, 48 hours. So we'd love to come back in two weeks and potentially wrap this up.
That sounds good.
What time do we have? Is it 7:30?
Yes.
All right. So do I have a motion to continue this to our April 10 meeting at 7:30? All right, motion made, motion made second. All who are in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
All who oppose, motion carries.
Thank you to the board. Thank you, Mr. Fattali, for your kind words.
Have a good night, guys.
Take care, Mr. Duffy.
All right, that moves us on to a gender item I, 1693 Shawshin Street. This is also continued from our 3:13 meeting.
New time, right? Yeah. Have to go right. Yeah. One, both ways. Good thing it's 7:30. Sorry about that.
No, I mean, let me say, but we hold on to the heat, and we'll do it later in the meeting.
How you doing today? Thank you. I already had that, actually. Yeah, good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Oh, you're good.
Was that?
Is this your last meeting or is this your last?
No, it's not my last. It's probably my last meeting, but it's not my last night. All right.
Thanks.
So is it gonna release? Put that thing, so. And both of them?
Makes sense to me, but I don't know yet.
Okay.
Saturday.
All right, gentlemen, state your names, the record, the floor is yours.
All right, good evening. David Giannetta, CEO of Collective Premium Cannabis, here with Brian Goodrow of Hancock Associates. Just as a refresher, we are operational in Billerica and Littleton. And, you know, here before you this evening to, from a continued hearing from the last. Mr. Fowler, congratulations.
Thank you.
Despite the fact that you're no longer gonna be on the board, I still extend the invitation as before. I'll be happy to take you on a tour. So happy to take you up on that. I'm gonna pass this off to Brian. He's gonna just give a, you know, quick, high-level summary of where we stand today after the last two weeks.
Thank you, Dave. So again, for the record, Brian Goodrow with Hancock Associates. So really quick, kind of high level, we still have some outstanding comments. We have three letters, one from engineering, one from Alex, and one from the peer reviewer on traffic via AI. We've reviewed everything, and we have a level of confidence that we'll be able to address anything outstanding in very short order between consultants, and hopefully tonight, we'll be getting the board that same level of confidence to hopefully condition some of these items. So I spoke with Mr. Stack, town engineer, on Friday, and there were three items that he had in his letter. One regarding stormwater management in pervious areas, and it was just simply a kind of a misunderstanding or a misinterpretation of the data that we had on the plan. We have a net reduction of impervious over the 2012, 2014 kind of approved and as-built plan on the site. So there's not gonna be any additional stormwater management that's required. So we're just clarifying a note on the plan. O and M records of the existing stormwater management were requested again, and we have submitted those through Alex. And sidewalks, also another kind of discussion item, if you will. We are not contesting the fact that sidewalks are being requested, and we've offered up either kind of a phased approach where we would construct them within five years or provide payment in lieu of. And there hasn't been a resolution on DPW's side yet as to which direction they would like to go, if they absolutely want them installed immediately prior to opening, or if one of the other kind of situations is acceptable. So we're gonna continue to work with them on that. With respect to traffic, so our traffic engineer issued their transportation analysis. Vaness and Associates subsequently reviewed it. And thank you very much, Alex, for having that done in a timely manner. The high-level kind of view of traffic is there are a couple of items that need to be addressed in terms of analysis. The consensus on the traffic study was that this project will not impact level of service in the surrounding intersections. VAI did ask to expand the study area to include Daskem Road at Smith and Daskem Road at Frontage Streets. It's underway right now. So the report is being revised, and we should have that to VAI in a couple of days. The, another item that came up is the way that trip generation was calculated. We calculated it based on the retail area of the proposed tenant space, which is 1,500 square feet. VAI is asking for the entire tenant, leasable tenant area to be included. So it goes from 1,500 square feet to 4,600 square feet, which essentially triples the trip generation of the establishment. Now, Dave at length described during the last hearing about his operations in Billerica, in Littleton, with respect to the surrounding communities that do have cannabis, that don't have cannabis. And we feel that we have a very accurate gauge on what anticipated sales and customers are gonna be visiting. And while we looked at the expanded trip generation numbers and the traffic engineer, our traffic engineer came to the conclusion that essentially, there will still not be a change in level of service at any of the intersections. It's really, it's kind of an academic exercise and difference of opinion, if you will, between Vaness and us. And it comes down to the fact that we don't think representing three times, in excess of three times, vehicles visiting the site, customers visiting the establishment is really accurate. And Dave had drafted a memo, and that was submitted, and I believe just handed out, so you kind of outlined the different criteria. But again, it's not detrimental to the findings. It's not creating a situation where this project is going to have to fund updates or improvements to intersections. It's just, it's semantics. We don't wanna represent three times the amount of customers and vehicles that are actually going to visit the establishment. So we're working through that with the peer reviewer. Peer reviewer also indicated they wanted an updated site distance for intersection site distance and stopping site distance. It was calculated at a 30 mile per hour speed limit on Shawshin. The 85th percentile is 34 miles per hour. So that would mean that we need to adhere to a 35 mile per hour site distance. Our site distance is in excess of 400 feet. If you go from 30 miles per hour to 35 miles per hour, all of the criteria are under 400 feet of site distance. So again, it's semantics. We have to correct it, obviously, within the report, but it's not changing our findings. Two other kind of key points I wanted to touch base on was transportation demand management. Dave will, and the traffic engineer, will create a traffic demand management kind of program. It's to encourage employees to use bicycles, just like how Dave said he would provide interior bike storage, to find ulterior motives of transportation for those employees to basically just try to reduce the amount of trips, carpool, things like that, to whatever is reasonable. So that's being developed right now. And then one kind of site-specific item that came out of VAI's letters, they were asking for the curb cut to be closed up to 24 feet. And their reasoning was basically to give a very clear direction, if you will, to people that are visiting the establishment. Collective is on the left-hand side. The existing contractor's office is on the right-hand side. If you recall at the first hearing, it was mentioned that maybe some wayfinding signage interior to the site will help with that, which we consented to and are now showing on the plan. So we think that we've kind of established that. So we just need to have that conversation with VAI as well. So again, transportation study was done. It was peer reviewed. The consensus is, we're not gonna be detrimental to the area. And then we have just some small housekeeping items to kind of resolve that. And then at the last hearing, we did have kind of a candid discussion about the Marieke signage. And Dave had issued a letter, I believe it was last week, that kind of outlined some of the messaging that would potentially be on the board. And if there's other comments or kind of discussion items on that, you know, we'd love to hear it. Dave obviously has kind of his experience at the other locations to fall back on if there are questions about that. And with that, we're here. We're happy to answer questions, and hopefully, we can make some progress this evening.
Start with that, Mr. Fattali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've seen your letter in identifying some of the slogans you might have on the message board.
Yes.
So I'll reiterate to you again, I'm not in favor of the message board myself personally, regardless of the logos you're gonna put on there. So in the event a waiver is required for that particular location, the signage, I'd be probably voting on the negative on that, just to make that upfront. I have visited a number of other cannabis sites and haven't seen a message board in any of them. So I don't think I would be in favor of that as far as that goes. So with that, I mean, everything else that you have still outstanding, we'll wait to get some results on that. But for now, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
So in the, in the letter I'm looking at, the memo I'm looking at, it said you were requesting a waiver regarding the bicycle rack. But I also saw somewhere else that you're providing the bicycle rack for your employees. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just wanna make sure I know which is correct, because.
So at the last hearing, we discussed a bicycle rack to be installed more traditionally, open to the public. I gave some reasons as to why we wouldn't recommend that from an anti-diversion standpoint was the key point. However, there was further discussion, I think, from Mr. Duffy, you know, if there could be some interior storage. So what we had proposed would be to have bicycle storage inside our secure delivery location, which is located in the rear of the building where we would take in normal product deliveries. So the storage of bicycles from employees would be inside that area there. So I suppose a waiver would still be recommended because of the fact that it's not exactly adhering to the bylaw around bicycle racks.
Okay. And then I just wanted to echo Mr. Fattali's comments that the waivers regarding the signage, you know, while I see what you're saying as far as a lot of the messaging would be innocuous, in this particular case, I don't find that consistent with the neighborhood or the area. So I don't know if the messaging is a make or break option for you, but I figured I'd let you my feelings known on that.
Thank you.
No further comments, Mr. Chairman.
Could I please comment to that? So, you know, the key waiver request for the sign is with regards to the right-of-way.
Setback.
The setback of the right-of-way. You know, I've displayed the reasons behind the message board. However, you know, I understand your position, and I wouldn't want to deter from the waiver for the actual purpose that we're, you know, we're truly trying to accomplish here. So, you know, I'd be open to waiving or eliminating the message board in lieu of, you know, an approval on the actual waiver of the signed location. So, you know, I'd be happy to agree to that.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a couple of quick questions. Not so much on the sign board. I guess, I, so I understand that you still have some things to work out with engineering as far as, and DPW as far as the sidewalk. So here's what I'm having a problem with, is why on earth would you not build a sidewalk when you were doing construction? It just, you know, why would you wanna wait five years to put a sidewalk in? I think that when a new business comes to town, and I think that probably, you know, most of us on the board here are, you know, you know, trying to make that happen, and, you know, we want successful businesses in town. But we want, you know, we wanna know what you're gonna bring to the town, too. Not what you're gonna, you know, try to lop off. And it just seems to me to be a, or do you have a good reason to not put the sidewalks in for five years?
Could I, could I just, could I answer that?
Sure.
So number one thought was, there is a sidewalk directly across the street. So, you know, our thought was, if we added a crosswalk from our location to the sidewalk, that would be, you know, somewhat of a compromise. Mainly, it's the expense of it, you know, it is an expensive ordeal. And, you know, if it comes down to it, where, if we need to work with this and have this done during construction, that's when we would do it. We would do it during construction. So I, you know, I don't, I don't wanna make it a big, you know, pushback on our part, because it's not. You know, it was more so trying to see where we can work with the expense of that build-out. That was something that we did not anticipate. So we were hoping to see if we could defer that expense. If it's not the case, it's not the case. And, you know, we'd have to find a way to make it happen during construction, so.
I mean, it's DPW purview anyways, and it just, you know, it's obviously cheaper when you're, during construction.
Of course.
To build whatever than it is to come back five years later and do it. And then we would have to, you know, set our calendar five years from now, make sure that you're putting a sidewalk in. And it just seems like a, you know, it just doesn't seem like that, you know, it just doesn't seem like you wanna bring something to Tewksbury. If we, if we, if we were in a position, which we're not anymore as a planning board, to give waivers on sidewalks because there isn't one, because there's one across the street, or there's one down the street, or whatever. I mean, right now, the town is doing a great job on connecting the pieces of sidewalks that are in place. And I think that we would like to continue that, you know, and to make some of these areas very walkable. And in the Shawshin Street, sidewalks are brand new, and they're getting a lot of play. So, you know, someday, your sidewalk will connect to another sidewalk, and that's what the hope is, you know? So, so that being said, that's my thoughts on that. What about the, how are you guys doing with the stormwater reports that are kinda?
That was one, the second piece of material that I handed out this evening.
The locks.
Okay.
And so all of those reports were submitted.
Oh, okay.
And logged by the owner.
Yeah. Okay, and then as far as the sign board, I guess I'd have to give that a little bit more thought. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Fowler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd make a suggestion to you.
I'd put the, uh, sign board in the background. Because that's something you can bring in if you think that you've been in business, if you think you need it. Just come back to the same board, talk to them, give your arguments in. And you, it won't be all of these questions, but just that one question. So I would do that.
I think that's fair.
Okay. That's all.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I've said it before, I'm, I'm the easiest person with the signs, uh, sign boards, because, you know, we have to go into detail. I just simply am. Doesn't look good here. We don't have any up in that area yet anyways, so I mean, you don't really have anything to sort of hang your hat on, um, up there. So, um, I think Mr. Fowler's suggestion is probably right. Maybe at some point, you know, revisit it. But I don't, you know, I don't see it right now. I mean, I can't speak to the, you know, the next, actually, the next board member can't deal with it, right?
Correct.
We've had too many hearings. Okay. So that wouldn't matter. So you're already down to four of us.
Understood.
Um, and I'm sure two of us say no.
Yeah.
So unlikely. Uh, if it was a magic eight ball. So, um, I think it best just to stick to the, the, the setback, uh, right of way, right of way.
I was going to ask if I can make a clarification on that, Mr. Chairman. So, the waiver that they are requesting is to be able to construct within, I believe it's ten feet of the right-of-way. And the requirement is fifteen, but the way that the site is already built out, it would cause them to put a pylon in the middle of a parking spot or in the middle of a drive aisle. So, um, just wanted to put that out there, that the waiver for that particular, for the free standing sign alone is going to be, um, an ask anyway. Not, not just because it's an electronic message sign.
I think that makes more sense than forcing compliance, which just screws up the parking lot, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense. So, I, I envision you'll have much better chance with that waiver than the one for the sign, so. Uh, otherwise, I'm all set, you've got some stuff to take care of. So, um, I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Seeing that half the, or more than half of the audience is pressed, I'm guessing no. So, right back to the board, seven thirty-five?
Yes.
All right, so do we have a motion to continue this to seven thirty-five?
So.
Motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, let's, we're going to take these last two together, if that's all right, to the administrative. Uh, we've had the same request on both, which is to, uh, conditionally release the bonds subject to, um, DPW's. I don't know, what do they need to say?
Um, they have a number of issues that they have to resolve for each project. And because both, uh, applicants are seeking street acceptance at town meeting, they have asked for conditional approval so that it comes off of the planning board agenda and they can work towards, um, just really, the last few comments are just compliance for, um, stormwater BNP's and sidewalks.
So basically, conditional as-built acceptance for both, um, pending DPW satisfaction of the issues they have.
Yes, and recommendation for street acceptance.
Yeah, okay. So, we have a motion for, we'll do the two of them together, which is, uh, ten oh-nine Livingston Street and two fifty-five Salem Street.
So, aye.
A motion made second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries on both. Any old business? Any new business? No correspondence? We'll do one last thing. I'm going to step out of the way. You go there and you take the last motion for adjournment.
I like this seat.
I know.
Motion to, to adjourn is in order.
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, will they say aye?
Aye.
We'll see how they do.